Well, thank you and good morning, Mayor Valdez-Fauli.
Morning.
Good morning, Vice Mayor Casada, Commissioner Mina, Commissioner Lago, and Commissioner Keon. It is a very special morning and I want to, first of all, say thank you to Commissioner Keon for sponsoring us today. I want to take a moment before I start to congratulate Mr. Peter Iglesias on your new position as City Manager.
Thank you.
Very proud of you. It's an absolute pleasure and an honor to be here with all of you today. And I'd like to first and foremost introduce the members that are here with me from our Miami-Dade County Public Schools, starting with our Chief Facilities Officer, Mr. Jamie Torrance. Also with us is Mr. Victor Alonso from our Facilities Department, Mr. Alonso, and Frances Vaya-Cue, our Chief of Staff from my office. Sure, okay.
You lost your opportunity.
It's like they're moving you around. I was a teacher, so I can adjust to anything. I'd like to first and foremost say that it is truly an honor for me to serve as your School Board Member representing District 6, particularly the city beautiful that I proudly have been a resident of for the majority of my life. I represent many schools in this district, and I believe that it is imperative that we're hands-on and that we don't talk the talk, but we rather walk the walk and work very cohesively with all of our stakeholders to address any concerns that they may have. This was especially the case when we dealt with Coral Gables Senior High School. Coral Gables Senior High is part of our $1.2 billion general obligation bond, and the Coral Gables community, I proudly can say, will soon be enjoying the school's new renovations and upgrades. If you see over here, we will be talking to you a little bit more about the facility and what it will look like after all of the renovations have been completed. Following my first election recently, I went to all of the schools that I represent. As I walked into Coral Gables Senior High School, I was very concerned about some of the things that I witnessed in reference to the physical plant. Our school is doing a superb job academically and is recognized nationally for some of the programs that we're offering our children, but we needed to have a physical plant that was just as appealing as the wonderful program that we offer at Gables Senior High School. I met with numerous members of our Facilities Department as well as other members at the district so that we could address the concerns in reference to Coral Gables Senior High. I also heard from many of our stakeholders who shared the similar concerns with me, and I decided to have a meeting at Coral Gables Senior High School with all of our community members. In attendance was Commissioner Keon and also Commissioner Lago, as well as your former City Manager. It was a wonderful platform for all of our stakeholders to voice their concerns. We listened very, very carefully to what they had to say and immediately continued to follow up on initiatives to make a difference at that school. Late March, I invited the Superintendent, Mr. Carvalho, Mr. Torrance, our Chief Facilities Officer, and other members of our district personnel, together with myself, to address with our community members the three-pronged $11.2 million action plan for the school. This community meeting took place again after numerous conversations with the city of Coral Gables, the Superintendent, the Office of School Facilities, school administration, and very important to us, the PTSA of Coral Gables Senior High School. The original budget for Coral Gables Senior High capital improvement was $11.2 million, but I am very happy to report that due to the collaborative efforts of all involved, all stakeholders, we were able to increase this to $15 million additional dollars with the adoption of the five-year plan, which was approved at our September Board Meeting. This will now include a brand-new building that was very much needed at Coral Gables Senior High. This project was, has been, and will continue to be, again, a collaborative effort by all stakeholders. I am very proud to say that you're going to be hearing a presentation now, which is going to detail for you every single part of our new initiative for Coral Gables Senior High, and I know that not only will you all be very pleased to hear the full presentation, but to all of our families, our stakeholders, everyone listening today, I'm very proud to be able to be here representing our School Board Chair, Ms. Perla Tabarez-Hantman, our Vice Chair, Dr. Martin Karp, the rest of my colleagues on the board, and our Superintendent, Alberto Carvalho, to share with you the new initiative for Coral Gables Senior High. It takes, I always say, teamwork to make the dream work, and with you all, Mayor Valdez-Fauli and your wonderful Commissioners here, you have made it part of that dream become a reality, and I cannot thank you enough. Also, I want to take a moment for a special shout-out, first of all, to all of you, but also to our Chief of Police, I believe Chief Udrack is here. I want to thank all of you for putting children first in the city beautiful and for helping us with the endeavor that we are all undertaking to ensure the safety and security of our children, of our teachers, our administrators, and our entire workforce. And because of your dedication and your commitment to the youth of today, who are future leaders of tomorrow, we now have sworn police officers at every single one of our schools in the city beautiful, and this is a win-win for all, but most importantly, it's a win-win for our children. So, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. The School Board truly appreciates what you have done for us.
Thank you, Martina. I have two or three questions, and I've always been curious about this, and I very much appreciate your efforts. So, my questions, you know, may sound aggressive, but they're not. It's just, and I'm glad you're addressing the problems, but Coral Gables High, up to two years ago, was a C-rated school. Why?
Thank you.
14% of the students at Coral Gables High were from Coral Gables because parents didn't want to send their kids to a C-rated school.
Right, but let me, let me address what I know of that. The only time, yes, the only time that it was a C-rated school, the only time, was when the state changed its requirement, where many of our schools went down because that year, everything was changed, and so many of our schools that year went down by a letter grade. After that, the school has been a B and an A school, and they're striving for an A school now, but I want to make clear something that I addressed yesterday with a group of stakeholders that I met with at Coral Gables Senior High School, and that is the fact that Coral Gables Senior High is a non-magnet school. We have a magnet program which is offered within the school, but it is not designated as a full magnet school, and out of the traditional schools, Gables is in the top rating with a B, and hopefully this year will be an A, but they only received a C-rating one time. As far as attracting more Gables students to our school, that is our goal, that is the principal's goal, that is the region's goal, that is a superintendent's goal, and that is your School Board Members' goal as well. And we are, as I said, offering wonderful academic programs at that school, which, by the way, we disseminated yesterday flyers, because many people don't know about special programs that are being offered there, such as the finance programs, such as a brand-new program for teachers. We have a shortage with teachers nationwide, and now we're going to hopefully have homegrown students that can later become teachers. So, we have a teaching academy being offered there for the first time ever, and many other initiatives, which we'll be happy to address, you know, with you further if you would like at another meeting. For today, though, I did bring with me our Chief Facilities Officer because I wanted to make sure that the physical plant, which is just as important to, again, be appealing to those in our community, as well as our academic programs be addressed. So, without further ado, and if you have any further questions, Mayor, I would be happy to answer after we have the presentation, absolutely. So, without any further ado, I'd like to welcome our Chief Facilities Officer, Mr. Jamie Torrance, and Mr. Alonso.
Before, before you leave and when they come up, because this has to do with facilities, I remember for many years, there were four schools in Miami, Miami High, Jackson, Coral Gables, and a fourth one whose name I don't remember. Miami High was renovated, and I understand that you spent $80 million in that renovation?
I will allow our Chief Facilities Officer to respond. I was not a Board Member at that time, but our Chief Facilities Officer, Mr. Torrance...
The second question having to do with that is, how long will it take for the, you know, the school to spend the $26 million? When will this start, and is this just, you know, a promise to shut us up?
No, it is not, sir. We work very cohesively and cooperatively with everyone, all of our municipalities. We don't only represent schools in the Gables. I represent schools in many different parts, including the Gables, but at our meeting today, we will be responding to those questions. We were prepared to make sure Mr. Torrance will be up here with me. We will be responding to all of your concerns prior to the end, but please note that we represent all of our schools, and we want what's best for all of them. Every single community has special needs, and we are trying to address all of those. And hopefully, by the end of the presentation, you will be receiving the answers to your questions.
And you have, we have, we're lucky that we have you representing us, and you're not lucky that you're in front of us today and you are representing us, so that's why you're the brunt of all of these questions, but I appreciate the answers.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you, and now, Mr. Torrance, you start with the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Pleasure to be here today to update you on, basically, we're going to go through the presentation that was made at Coral Gables Senior High to the community. Commissioner Keon was there, going over the plan for the school, the original allocation for the project, and what's happened since then, because I think a significant amount of additional resources are being allocated to the school, and wanted to give you a picture of how that's going to look and how it addressed some of your concerns regarding the timing of the work. Before I start, I'd like to address your other questions. You've mentioned Miami High. Miami High was not funded through the general obligation bond. It preceded the bond. The project was $48, $9.8 million. It was completed, I believe, around 2010, so it preceded the bond. You mentioned Jackson also. That was a project that was in the early 2000s and was, was completed and included, basically, a replacement of the school, and I didn't catch the third school that you mentioned.
I didn't remember the name, or I don't remember the name of the third school, but there were four.
But as far as the bond program goes, which was a commitment that was made when the voters approved this in 2012, Coral Gables Senior High actually had about $10.4 million of bond revenue. Subsequent to that, about $800,000 was added even before this most recent allocation, as to, as Ms. Rojas mentioned, bring the project up to $11.2. Now, based on the approval of the Board of our five-year capital plan in September, the total allocation's about $26.2, so about $15 million was added, and I guess we can start the presentation. So, this is, again, back in March of this year. Let's see if the clicker works here. No. There we go. Okay, so we've kind of gone over this already, but the, the original scope of the, of the $11.2 million was renovating the existing buildings. There's a lot of air conditioning systems. These buildings were built in the 1950s primarily. There's some, some newer additions after that, but the focus was primarily renovation. An architect was commissioned, as well as a CM@Risk Construction Manager, to do this work, and as of March, the scoping for that project had been completed, but it included primarily renovation. There was no new construction envisioned at that time, and it was going to be, the building was going to be brought up to the current standards for lighting, air conditioning, and so forth. So, what we, what we did is, we had a number of meetings, there were discussions with the community, and we started trying to formulate a complimentary plan, which included some immediate repairs that were needed at the school, that couldn't really wait until the renovation project took place, and then we kind of reconfigured the project to advance an addition, a replacement of several buildings, and a brand-new building that's going to be constructed, and you're going to see some renderings of that, and then push the renovation into an additional phase. So, let me go through this. So, I guess we discussed this. It's basically a three, three-phase approach. The first phase, which involved addressing the immediate needs of the school, is pretty much underway. A lot of that was accomplished in the spring and the summer, which addressed a number of concerns that Ms. Rojas mentioned that were evident as you walked through the campus, so we couldn't really wait to, to the major project to be done to address those things, and those were, were done through the summer. There's some plumbing issues and some HVAC issues that were corrected.
Excuse me, when was your visit? When was your visit?
I visited all of my schools at the beginning, two years ago, when I first, it's going to be two years.
Two years. Sorry.
Okay, so I think I've addressed this. The initial phase was done by our in-house forces, mainly our maintenance department. We had a great deal of focus on the school, and that was done throughout the course of the summer and late spring. So, the second phase, as, as we were talking, is now the construction of a new building. So, along the west side of the building, the campus buildings six and seven, which are the cafeteria, and some of the labs that are on, on that area, some of the older and least appealing buildings along Riviera are going to be demolished and replaced with a brand-new building, which we can show you over here. So, let me try the pointer. So, we're looking at buildings over here, along the Riviera side. You currently have some very old buildings. You're going to see a brand-new building erected here. The older buildings are going to be demolished to create a courtyard in this area, which is now cluttered with a lot of mechanical systems, chillers, boilers, et cetera. A new chiller plant, new mechanical building's going to be constructed over here that's going to serve not only the new building that's added, but it's going to serve the entire campus. So, that's really the first piece that's going to be added, is the, the mechanical building with new electrical service to the school and new chillers, so that we'll have reliable air conditioning system, which I know has been an issue ongoing. So, this is what we're working on right now. We'll go back to the slide. Okay, so as I showed you on the plan, you're going to see a new chiller plant that's going to be installed in, in the corner of the campus, back by the baseball field, and then the new buildings. So, we're going to be demolishing Buildings six and seven. This is a phase demolition. The first part of it is going to be to clear space for the footprint of the new building, and I'm going to give you the timelines on all this in a minute. So, the new classroom addition will be constructed along the parking lot, where currently the cafeteria and kitchen are. So, you have a brand-new building there that will allow us then to demolish the, the remaining buildings. So, when we're done, you're going to have a courtyard in that area with the, the new building being the face of the school along Riviera Boulevard, Riviera Drive, and this will give you an idea of, and this is not the exact look of the building, but an idea that's going to be a brand-new facility. We've actually used this design already, which is what is allowing us to expedite this work. It's a, it's a design that's already been used at Michael Crop Senior High, and in fact, I think some of your staff and community members actually visited that school and walked through it, and we're very pleased with it. We just opened it this fall. So, now, the third phase, and the third phase is only made possible now because of the appropriation of the additional $15 million. So, where we, originally, we had 11, actually, $10.4 augmented to $11.2. We now have $15 million to address the remainder of the school, but it's really even better than that, because we're now demolishing two older buildings, which previously would have consumed some of that $11.2. So, we now have $15 million to focus on the buildings along Bird Road and along Le June. So, the focus of, will be the original buildings of the school, Buildings one, two, three, and four. We will also be renovating the auditorium and the gymnasium. The auditorium, if you recall, several years ago, we did through an agreement with the, the city and the, for the parking of your, your shuttle or your...
Trolleys.
Your trolleys. There was an allocation made to the auditorium, I think it was about $250,000. We did replace the seats and the flooring, but there's still more work that needs to be done there, but that will be incorporated in the, in the third phase. So, at this point, in, in March, when we made the presentation, we intended to request funding. Now, again, I'm pleased to report, we do have the funding, it's been appropriated in our five-year capital plan, and we're ready to proceed. So, this is a part of the, just a rendering of what the, the school would look like. I mean, this are not exact, but this is just a conceptual rendering. We're going to have the same color scheme throughout the entire building, the new buildings as well as the existing, so honoring the historic nature of the school, but also bringing it up-to-date to 21st century technology and, and facilities. So, I already talked about Phase One, it's basically completed. Phase Two, which the architect for this was commissioned by the Board in May, it's going to be Silva Architects, and design is already underway. We expect for construction to begin during the summer, spring, summer of '19, and with this build, the new building to be ready for the 20, 2021 school year in August of '20. So, that's the first major piece of, of this plan. The second phase is the architect we had originally commissioned for the renovation is still on board. We've, we're re-tasking them with a focus on just the remaining buildings and really going a little deeper, since we do have a larger budget now for those buildings, we want them to go a little bit deeper into those buildings and address not only the high, the, the safety, life deficiencies and such that they were originally going to address, but be able to do a little bit more there with the allocation that we have. Again, they're already on board. We expect, as, as soon as we have those plans completed, to then commission a construction management firm. Well, actually, we already have commissioned to, to actually bid this project and begin construction concurrent with the construction of the, of the new building. I don't have exact dates for you yet, because as I said, we sent the architect back to go a little bit deeper on this. We'd be happy to update you as soon as that is completed. So, that pretty much concludes my presentation. I don't know if there are any additional questions. I'll be happy to try and address them.
Thank you very much. Very instructive and very encouraging, and I thank you.
Yeah, I got to tell you, there's been, there's been some misinformation out there, but this is, this is awesome.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Awesome is the highest praise I can give you, so thank you for that. But I had heard from, so it's funny, we, I deal with the school quite a bit. I volunteer as a mock trial coach for them, so I'm there quite often, and it's just a lot of different rumors that you hear, what's going to happen, if the money's allocated, it's going to take forever to get done, but it seems like you all are being very proactive and making it happen quickly, so thank you for that.
I am. I asked them to come today because they had presented to the school community committee that we have, but that, that presentation really didn't go out to the community or to us, and, you know, now we have it on, on TV, and hopefully, when people listen to the, the commission meeting, and if someone writes about it, or we write about it, we can put out all of the correct information. And all that you've done, I, I am extremely grateful to all of you for working with us. I knew when, when I first ran, six years ago, you know, dealing with issues regarding schools was really very important to me, and, you know, through our combined efforts and cooperation, we have established boundaries for our schools, which has really increased the, the number of children at Coral Gables Elementary School tremendously. I think they opened like three new classes, their grade or something, just to accommodate students, where parents now know where their children can go to school. We did, you know, we have a 25% matter for, for Sunset, you know, for our, what were the choice areas, which we're exceedingly grateful for, too. And, and this project, I remember when we started, and it started with the $11 million allocation, and, you know, as we worked with you, and we asked you to look at different things that were happening in that school and the condition of this school, along with, you know, some of our community members, that we really owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to Jack Lowell and other people in the community who don't have children at the school, but deeply care about public education and deeply care about our public schools, you know, came to work with us and help us, and the parents and the students at Coral Gables High School are inspiring when you, when you speak with them and the teachers as to how badly they want a facility that matches the capability of their students and the academic programs that they offer in the school, and I think that we're getting there. I mean, we have more than doubled the allocation for the renovation of this school because we have worked together, and, and you have been responsive to us. I am grateful to you. Please give my best regards to the Superintendent, thank him for all that he has done, and as we go forward, you know, we know that we will have a school that, once again, not only will we be proud of their academic success, but we will be proud of the appearance of that school and the care that we will take of that school and what you've given back to us in, in terms of a facility. I, I really, I can't thank you enough for all that you have done and for working with us and your cooperation and listening to us, and, I mean, I know we have had some, some differences as we've gone along, and, and, you know, there were issues with the elementary school with regard to windows. I know that we have maintained, because it's a historic structure, you know, the tile roof is exceedingly important to us, and so we know going forward that you will recognize those things and that it will remain a tile roof, and we will remain the historic integrity of that particular school, and that, you know, we'll return this to the colors that it was, you know, the traditional colors or the colors that have always marked this school. So, I am, I am very grateful. I mean, I think for us now, we need to recognize that the past is the past. You know, we are working together. Congratulations on your reelection. I hope you're there for a long time with us, and, you know, for our relationship with the school system, and, and I'm very glad that, that you came, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
And you'll provide us with the timeline at some point, yes?
One quick item. I know we still have our advertisement in the Herald. I would love to promote the fact that this is coming.
Yeah.
And that it's okay with everyone else.
Absolutely.
So, we have a...
It is.
Is it?
Weekly.
Yeah, it's a weekly advertisement half-page in, in Neighbors, and we just put different events and things going on, but I'd love to be able to promote this, so if we can have someone from...
Yes, we will.
Our City Manager's Office reach out to, so we get some high-res photos, so we can do something nice, just to...
Meredith.
Because again, there's been a lot of misinformation that I think we need to clear up.
I think, I think to dovetail on that, I think it'd be good for CGTV to put together one of these little videos that we can...
Oh, yeah.
I do, too. I think they, they do like a morning talk, or they, they do, you know, that they then show over and over where, you know, maybe you can come in and, and sit down and, and talk to them. Mr. Manager...
We want to show off your good work, and we want to let people know.
Yeah.
That's it. So, help us coordinate that.
Mayor, if I may, I just, I just want to also echo the sentiments of Commissioner Keon and the rest of the Commission. Since you got elected, you were not afraid to get into major projects like this that needed to be dealt with for such a long time, and I also wanted to thank Mr. Torrance, who we've met on multiple occasions. This is going to, this is going to, this is a major issue here in the city, and I'm excited the fact that you took this on. I know it's your job, but some people sometimes shy away from contact, and since you got elected, you've been at the forefront of all these issues, and you delivered. You didn't deliver on $10 million, you delivered on $27 million for the city of Coral Gables, and for a long time, we felt a little bit neglected, and this is going to really help the students in, in our city, and I'm just beyond excited, and I wanted to say thank you for your efforts. I know you worked incredibly hard, and you made a promise, and you kept your promise, and in today's day and age, you know, that should be commended, both of you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
I really, again, have to tell you that the passion and, and the support of your, your PTSA and people that live in this community that have, in the past, attended this school is, is just tremendous, so great, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't take it too...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just one final note.